October 18th, 2023, Board of Douglas County Commissioners, 5:30 Business Meeting. We want to welcome those of you who are here with us in person at the old courthouse, and also anyone who's joining us online. Some of you may be here to provide public comment. The Board of Douglas County Commissioners welcomes public comment and in advance thanks you for following these procedures. Each action item on the agenda will offer an opportunity for relevant public comment about that topic. We ask that you wait until the agenda item you're here for comes up to our discussion. Comments relating to agenda items are welcome after the Board has had an opportunity to discuss the topic. Board of Douglas County Commissioners will invite comments on topics not included on our agenda during general public comment. This will be directly after considering the consent agenda. This is time for addressing issues not on today's agenda but related to the general business of the Douglas County Commission. We'll first call on folks who are here in person, and then we'll turn to any online commenters who are here with us tonight. If you're here on Zoom, please plan to use the raise your hand function when the time comes, and listen for staff to call your name. All comments will be limited to three minutes, and we ask everyone to give their full name and Douglas County residence for our meeting minutes. All public comments should be directed to the County Commission. Campaigning for public office is not allowed. We also reserve the right to mute and remove any speaker who is vulgar, rude, or inappropriate. Public should know that comments received by the Commission during our meetings do not represent the views of Douglas County Government. If visual aids are used during the meeting, the presenter will share their screen. Please note that the online participants will not be able to view them without a computer, tablet, smartphone, those three, during tonight's meeting. Materials will be published online for your reference as well. Lastly, a recording of this meeting will be available on our YouTube page and website. Our meeting tonight will start with a proclamation for World Polio Day. We have three items on our consent, excuse me, four items on our consent agenda, and then we will do general public comment. Our regular agenda has two items. One will be a presentation from our land appraiser, our Douglas County Appraiser, on land use changes in taxable value, and then we will consider adopting the Joint City-County Resolution regarding the Lawrence Community Shelter. After that, we'll have appointments, Commissioner and Administrator miscellaneous before we adjourn. Commissioner Willie has asked to read the proclamation for World Polio Day, and we'll start with that.
You have, thank you. Been impacted, have family and friends that have been impacted by polio, so I'm very glad to read this. So, World Polio Day in Douglas County, October 24th, 2023. Whereas Rotary International, founded on February 23rd, 1905, in Chicago, Illinois, USA, is the world's first and one of the largest nonprofit service organizations, and whereas Rotary is a global network consisting of over 1.4 million members in more than 46,000 clubs in 221 countries and geographical areas, who unite as neighbors, friends, leaders, and problem solvers to take action to create lasting change in communities across the globe. And whereas polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. And whereas to date Rotary has contributed more than 2.6 billion and countless volunteer hours to protecting nearly 3 billion children in 122 countries. And whereas Rotary is working to raise an additional 50 million per year, which would be leveraged for maximum impact by an additional 100 million annually from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And whereas there are 133 members of the Rotary, Lawrence Rotary Club, 84 members of the Jayhawk Breakfast Rotary Club, and 39 members of the Lawrence Central Rotary Club, who sponsor service projects to address such critical issues as poverty, disease, hunger, illiteracy, and the environment in our local community and abroad. And now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County, Kansas, do hereby proclaim October 24th, 2023, as World Polio Day in Douglas County, and encourage all citizens to participate in this observation, adopted this day, 18th of October, 2023. I believe you have someone to come up and speak to this?
Jennifer, you'll need to push that button, and the light will turn green. There you go.
Hi, thank you. I'm Jennifer Burquist, citizen of Douglas County, and also the Chair of the Polio Plus Committee in the Lawrence Rotary Club. And I also have Stephen Johnson here. He's from the Breakfast Rotary Club. We want to thank you for signing the proclamation and reading it today, and on behalf of all the Lawrence Rotarians, we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Jennifer, we have your proclamation here. Don't leave without it. Thank you, Stephen. Thank you, Commissioner Willie. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Commissioners, would either of you like to pull an item from our consent agenda for further discussion? Nope? Anyone from the public here like to remove a consent agenda item for further discussion? Anyone online, Sarah? All right, seeing none, I would take a motion on the consent agenda.
Commissioner Reed, move to approve items 2.1 through 2.4.
With second, and also just a congratulations for our new appraiser, Brad Eldridge, who we're also going to hear from later, so.
Yeah. Agreed. Congratulations, Brad. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 3-0. We'll move now to general public comment. Is anyone here to provide general public comment? Anyone online, Sarah? Okay. We'll close general public comment and move to our regular agenda items, and the first one is for land use changes in taxable value, and we'll hear from our brand-new county appraiser, Brad Eldridge.
Well, Brad's getting it up and introducing himself. Just want to, this is a conversation that the Commission sort of asked us to follow up on, and, you know, we talk a lot about land use changes and different changes in zoning code, and I don't think we always think about how it relates to taxation, so I, I'll turn it over to Brad.
Thanks, Sarah. Good evening, and thank you again for approving my appointment. I'm honored to serve Douglas County and look forward to doing that in this capacity. So, like Sarah said, we have a lot of things happening with development in the county, and we thought this would be an opportunity for us to talk about what that looks like, how it impacts the tax rule, and how we're looking for things going forward. You know, we have some solar energy projects coming online, and we also have some even changes here with our tax rule in town, you know, things going over on the West Campus and things like that that will impact our tax rule, so wanted to kind of keep that in mind and where we're looking for the context on that. So, with the valuation process, we look at a snapshot of January 1st every tax year, and so we look at that as our effective data value, and so we're going to be looking at what's on each parcel of property as of that date, and so we're looking at all of the factors involving in the marketplace at that point in time, but then we're also looking at what's exactly on that property as of that date. And so that's going to determine this assessment classification, whether it's agricultural, vacant land, residential, or commercial, and then it also is going to influence the type of data that we look at for appraising that property, coming up to the appropriate value. And so, as we look at transition of property that's in the ag areas of the county, a lot of that's going to be vacant, no improvements, no buildings, and things like that. Sometimes we'll have a project that doesn't start until January 2nd. We don't list it on the tax rule because it did not exist there on January 1st. If we did have a project that started there at the end of December, and they have some substantial improvements on there, we will list those on the tax rule, and that will change some of the classification on the property there. So as we come up with the tax bill for different properties, we start with that market value on the property, and then we take an assessment ratio and apply that to that market value, and that's going to be influenced by its classification. And so whether it's residential, commercial, agricultural, things like that, and then we're going to come up with what we call an assessed value, and that's what we really call the value that's on our tax rule.
And Brad, the assessment ratio, that's set by the state, right? Not by the county?
Yeah, the criteria for the assessment ratio is set by the state, and it's in the Constitution. It's been in there since the 1980s, and so our role in our office is to determine what classification, what bucket it falls into, what kind of category that is. So once we get that assessed category, that assessed value, we're going to apply the mill levy to that assessed value to come up with the tax bill, and then that role is transitioned to the Treasurer's Office at that point in time. And so they'll take care of the billing and the collections. We're going to be setting up the values on that. My next slide I have here is kind of a breakdown of what all those different assessment classes look like, and so these are the ones we have outlined to us by our Constitution, and most of these are going to fall in the residential and commercial categories. We have a lot of agricultural land in there, and as you look through that, you know, the vacant land and the residential land typically have a lower assessment ratio as compared to their commercial and agricultural counterparts, but keep in mind on the agricultural land, which we're going to talk about here in a little bit, it's, it has preferential assessment treatment, and it's essentially a form of exemption, and what we look at is compared to its fair market value on there. And so on our ag use, which we have a lot in our unincorporated areas, that statute looks at whether it's being devoted to the production of any type of plants, animals, or horticultural products, and so we have our own ag use policy that we just updated in our office. It's about 10 pages, a really good reading, if you want to check it out on our website, but it gives us some more boundaries. The statute is a little bit gray on what is specifically qualified, and so we created some of our definitions to augment that, so that way we can have consistency with our staff, and also so the public can be aware, and then have everyone on the same page there. But this is usually the starting point for where we see the land in the county is under this agricultural use classification, and then once they start doing construction, it'll change into a different category based on what that actual use is. And so as we look at that, there's a special category, we call it a use value, that statutes allow us to do that, and what it ends up being is about 5% to 10% of the actual fair market value, and so you can kind of see the inverse of that. They're getting about usually a 90%, 95% tax exemption because of that agricultural use that's in place. All the other properties in the county are based on fair market value, so agricultural properties are the only one that receive that type of treatment, and it only applies to the land. The buildings are assessed at their fair market value, and then that 30% rate, it goes on then.
Brad, thank you for that distinction, because I wanted to clarify that about residences on agricultural land in particular. Can you just elaborate a little bit on what, what exactly fair market value means, and what tools in particular your office has to, how do you assess and find what the fair market value is year after year?
So, for fair market value, we take a look at sales that occur between buyers and sellers in the open market. There is a statute that gives us guidance on that as well, but what it boils down to is a property that's been offered on the open market, everyone had an opportunity to have exposure and a chance to make that decision with the seller on that. What we do is we get the sale data when a property transfers, and we get that, in Kansas, they're required to report that sale price, and then we go and qualify that sale. We try to confirm it and make sure that we understand whether it was on the open market, whether it was between unrelated parties, things like that, and if it checks all the boxes for being an appropriate, good indication of market value, we include that in our data set, and that becomes part of our market analysis. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Can I ask a related question?
Yeah.
What, how do you determine the productivity of that parcel? What data goes into that? Is it generalized? I know Farm Service Agency has actual data on all of our parcels and yields, but that seems pretty granular for what you're doing.
It does, and then that is a lot of work for our office for an exempt classification type of property, but we take a look at soil types, and so we get all that from the Farm Services Agencies, and we also look at whether it's irrigated, things like that, its productive capacities, but, you know, there are about 150, 200 different soil types that are broken down in our county, and so we go through and we work with our GIS mapping department and making sure that we break it down by the tenth of an acre of what each parcel is on its soil type. So, and then the state comes up with the evaluation metric, and it takes a look at the combination of between landlord and tenant shares on productive capacity for, based on their production of that soil type, whether it's cropland, or whether it's grassland, things like that. It's a lot of data that they look at. They look at a nine-year rolling average of productivity to come up with those metrics, and we get those from the state. And so we don't, we don't value, we don't come up with the agricultural values in-house. We receive those from the Department of Revenue.
Thank you.
All right, so what I have here on the next slide, I wanted to kind of give you an example of what a large development might look at for a hypothetical solar project. This one would be about 1,000 acres in an unincorporated, unincorporated township area, and so the middle column is a green, what it would be based on is agricultural value, and so we're looking at about a value of roughly 544,000 based on agricultural use. Now, if it went to a commercial improvement supporting a utility, infrastructure, things like that, it is no longer going to qualify for agricultural use, and so at that point in time, we would change the classification to commercial, and the land would be valued and assessed as commercial. And so that value in our situation right here would increase from 544,000 to about 7.75 million, and that's on the fair market value side.
And can you back up? That we're not talking about a zoning change whatsoever? That is taxed on the use, and then that use can also go back to agriculture?
Correct, yeah. For assessment purposes, we do not consider zoning. It's based on its actual use for classification, for personal purposes, yeah.
Brad, we've had some conversation about agrivoltaics here, so it could be using land for agricultural purposes and for solar. How would that impact it?
The language in the statute goes to what its predominant use is, and most of the folks in the industry are looking at, you know, its primary function is to support the solar capacity for that energy production, and that any kind of grazing, you know, if that's cheap out there and grazing underneath the panels and things like that, that'd be a secondary function. It would not be something that would be happening 365 days a year like the utility would be. Good question.
So, go ahead. We also looked at, when we were kind of looking at some of the agrivoltaics definitions and such, farms that were farms primarily, and then they added solar panels to kind of augment the farming activities that they did there. Does that then become more nuanced if there's more perhaps income off of the solar production, but more emphasis on the farm production? How do you weigh those? That's not what we're looking at in terms of like utility-scale solar, which I agree that the primary use for that land at that point is production, is solar production, but...
I think in that situation, we'd have to see what actually happens. The guidance that we've gotten from the Board of Tax Appeals and in other similar situations, they like to see what was proposed, planned, and then actually occurred, and so when things transition in and out of agricultural use, it can be a two-year, three-year process as they try to get that all together, coming in and out of that, so. But the guidance that we're receiving right now from the Department of Revenue is to classify the land as commercial. So...
Before you move on, Brad, could we talk a little bit more about predominant use with other types of renewable energy projects? So, for example, wind, how does that relate to predominant use? Here, solar does have a predominant use on the land. Can you talk a little bit about wind?
With the, with the wind energy, it would be a different situation than solar because the spacing of the wind turbines, you know, some of them are several hundred, several thousand feet apart, and from what we're seeing on our neighboring counties, they will list roughly a half an acre or one acre carve-out of the commercial land classification, and they're able to usually keep the rest of the agricultural land around it in production without it being impacted. You know, the driveways that access the turbines and things like that, that wouldn't be able to be dedicated to agricultural use, and so it would, it'd be more of a kind of a surgical removal of those little parts out of the larger tract.
So predominant use by surface area?
Correct, yeah. And from the calendar year perspective, too. You know, they're looking at what had happened up to that January 1st effective date, and then what's anticipated to go forward, and then so, you know, if you have an agricultural site that's transitioning into ag and it has never been worked as agricultural land, you know, they have to go through a lot of procedures to get the land ready to go. They have to put in an herbicide, they have to do plantings, they have to do tilling, put up fence, and things like that.
That's not the only view of agriculture.
Yeah, not the only view, but yeah, but that's usually the ones that we encounter quite a bit with the folks that are sensitive to it in our office, worrying about the agricultural use, especially around the peripheral of the city limits.
I want to rewind a little bit and try and unpack, or I guess just make sure I'm tracking correctly what you just said about wind, and so, you know, based on the surface area, the, oh, sorry, the spacing of turbines on any theoretical parcel, the understanding correctly that, I mean, it doesn't, it's not likely to change the predominant use of the land, but that there still could be some commercial taxing on just the isolated acreage that the turbines were on?
Yes, and if, if you've ever, yeah, if you've ever come up to a cell phone tower, you've seen, you know, they have the main monopole set up, and then they have a peripheral fence around that for security reasons and things like that, they would have a similar delineation around the turbine in order to secure that turbine pole, and a lot of that, that portion of the site would be out of agricultural production.
What about the reverse, I suppose, in this hypothetical solar project? Sort of assume that the predominant use would be solar because much of the surface area would be covered in panels and be operating, you know, functioning 365 days a year, as you just pointed out theoretically, but if, for example, there were to be, you know, in that parcel, some significant portion of land that was still being used for agriculture could and would that be sort of isolated and taxed at a different rate based on that acreage area?
Yes, it could, it could, yeah. So, you know, if they were using, say, half the site to support the solar panels, and then half the site was still in production, then we could still have a mixed assessment on that.
So it's not that it just automatically tips the scale to the entire parcel, every last bit of acreage?
Right.
Will automatically be commercial if perhaps there is two different uses at a substantial enough amount of the land?
Yeah, and unfortunately, they revised the statute about five years ago, so we could do that. It used to be all or nothing.
Got it.
And so when they revised that, it helped us give that flexibility of partial assessment like that, so we could do mixture of two uses, or three uses, so.
So, that's the land and the taxation on the land. What about the improvements for both solar and wind installations? I recognize that there's a federal statute that does not put those on the tax rolls for the first 10 years, but talk about what happens when that does.
So, the, this is considered personal property, and so what they look at that is a seven-year life, and it bottoms out at a 20% good after seven years, and so if you're looking at 10 years of being exempt, when it comes onto the tax roll in year 11, it'll be at 20% of whatever its cost new was. And so, you know, as we look at some of these projects, you know, there's several hundred thousand, or several hundred million is what we've been getting close on so far in some of these large-scale solar projects, and so you would be looking at 20% of that, you know, then times your assessment rate, and then times the mill levy, and so, and that has changed every few years, too, on how they've treated that as well. So it's kind of a moving target for us.
And, and within that time period, before the structures themselves usually hit the tax rolls, there's often a, you know, pilot payment or payment in lieu of taxes that are negotiated with counties. Does that also fall through your office, or is that someplace else?
We would help administer those programs, and so the pilot programs, the payment in lieu of taxes is very common with the wind farms. The solar project, it's been kind of a mixed bag so far. It's been about 50/50 from what we've seen on the new projects coming on. This is still very new to a lot of the counties, and so they're just now starting to hit the tax rolls statewide. Now, the wind farms have been around for, you know, about a decade, 10 or 15 years right across the state, and so they've got various examples of those pilot programs in place, and then some of them are flat across the 10 years, some of them escalate every few years, some of them, the pilot will end at year 10, and some of them will go on another 20 years after that, but at a lower rate because the personal property's now on the tax roll, and so there's a variety of ways they've negotiated those in the different counties.
And so we don't have as much experience in the state of Kansas on large-scale solar installations, but it sounds like there's a significant difference in the base taxation of the land, whereas that's not the case with wind, so that the pilot is more of an issue with wind because we're otherwise not capturing that for a period of time.
Correct, yeah, I think that's part of the mindset behind that. All right. So, so moving on to the actual tax impact on these, the next slide, and this is my last one to kind of illustrate what we're talking about, the differences between the agricultural and the commercial classifications. The green shaded line in the middle of the grid will show you what it would be agricultural before any type of commercial changes. The total taxes for 1,000 acres would be about $20,000 per year. For a particular township, they, it would come out to about $3,600, depending on what township you're in. Now, if we were going to go to a hypothetical commercial assessment for that same 1,000 acres, you'd be looking at a total tax bill of about 238,000, of which about 43,000 would go to the township, and so these are the kind of impacts you would see in those individual taxing units at the local level.
There may not be a pilot payment on top of that. This is just the kind of baseline.
Yeah, this is just beyond the real estate tax rule, outside of any kind of pilot arrangement.
And who would be responsible for that tax bill? Is that, I mean, is that part of their agreement that they have? I mean, if someone, because it's a lease of their property...
Because some of them are on land leases. When we've talked to some of the concerned property owners about that, we've encouraged them to make sure that they put the real estate taxes or any type of assessments associated with their change in use to go on to the tenant. You know, otherwise, I think with landlord tenant law in Kansas, if it's not said in the lease, it defaults to the landlord, and so that's why we've been encouraging the owners to make sure they negotiate that, and it's pretty common for those to do it, but it's one of those things you want to make sure you encourage them to get that in the contract.
I mean, I think, Brad, this is really helpful to me, and I just want to confirm, because we've had a number, like, we're talking some of these large-scale hypothetical utility projects, and one of the things I think we need to iterate in here is that that shouldn't be a deciding factor on land use decisions for us, right? That this is just information only, but we've also had a number of CUPs or temporary business, and this would apply to that as well. Is that correct?
If it's something that was unimproved in the prior tax year, and we have new construction, yes, it would apply to that, and that's what we're seeing, you know, with right now with our residential construction in the county, about half of it is outside of the incorporated areas, and so half of it's in the rural areas, half of it's in Lawrence, Baldwin, and Edoora, and so this is something that we're going to continue to see as changes, and will be part of the maybe decision-making process for the open spaces and things like that, and use policies.
Can you repeat what you just said about half of the, is it commercial development or all development is occurring outside of the...
About half of the residential development that we're seeing in the county is in the rural areas, and so it's about 50/50 in town versus out of town.
How long has that been the case?
And about, that's just the last year's statistics. Looking back further than that, when we had lots, I'd say there would be more in the urban areas and the incorporated areas, but we're out of lots right now, and so I've seen a couple plats come through this past month, and that's going to be changing. We have some areas being annexed, and that will be changing, but we're pretty much out of space right now inside Lawrence right now.
I think I saw a statistic recently about new building permits in the unincorporated versus the city of Lawrence that was pretty shocking, so.
Sarah, can you include that in a future memo for us? That would be great. Brad, I just want to make sure I understand this, because I, this is very enlightening to me, and, and so like, let's say we have a hypothetical landscape truck business, right? That they are storing that on their property. If the primary, if the primary use then becomes commercial, it changes the assessed value, and there would be taxation implications that would go to the townships who would say, to help care for their roads in that community. Is that correct?
That's correct. It just depends on what the starting point was before. You know, if it was perceived as being an agricultural building, the building wouldn't change much, but maybe the supporting land value would change, and so it might not be as dramatic, but there would be a change.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thinking about TBUs also, and just sort of the spectrum of them, and that there are some that seem like it wouldn't necessarily be an obvious predominant use, or, well, I'm thinking of like the meteorological equipment that's out, that, you know, it's pretty small equipment, it's a tiny part of a large parcel, so that's not going to switch something. A lawn care business that is creating new structures and or substantially changing the land to establish their business there, seems like the more obvious, that tips the point to commercial.
Yeah, it's kind of somewhat akin to what the county's zoning office, you know, how they kind of revise their home occupation codes, you know, if, you know, someone's just using one room out of their house every now and then to do haircuts, that's not a big deal, you know, if they're just using a bedroom to work from home, that's not a big deal. If we start seeing major products being sold there, you know, workforce working in more than half the building, things like that, we're going to start seeing some changes there on the classification. there on the classification.
What's the difference between this hypothetical landscape company that either is part of, has a residence on site, whether that's owner occupied or not, and then maybe that's a home business, maybe it's not if it's not owner occupied, or one that does not? Does that, if that predominant use is still kind of commercial, but somebody lives there, how do you differentiate?
What we'll do is for the residential portion of that, we'll allocate the physical space that seems to be dedicated to that. We use our aerial images and what we see outside on the ground, and I come up with an appropriate allocation of the physical site. And so that would be residential assessment ratio, that 11.5%. Same thing for the building, the house there in place. All the other parts, if they're detached structures, which we see this quite a bit, you know, if we see a detached outbuilding, things like that, that support a business situation, that's when we will make the land be assessed at 25% for the commercial rate and the building at the same.
I just feel like this is a really appropriate time to say, the level of detail and precision that goes into this process, multiply that by 45,000 parcels in Douglas County.
Yeah, this is, and we have 14 people on staff, too.
So for...
Much as in July, Brad.
So for like an ag-exempt building that you're going through, the county's zoning codes in terms of like what, what kinds of permits and such that you need to have, you have to prove that it's ag-exempt, is that just a higher bar than what you're doing? You're going by kind of visual uses, or are those two things related?
We send out surveys every other year to half of the agricultural property owners that already have agricultural use classification. So we send them a survey to say, hey, you know, here's an aerial of your property, can you please confirm how we have it allocated for our soil types and the actual production, whether it's crop, or whether it's in grassland, or if it's gone back to native, things like that. And then also to kind of give us ahead what their plans are for next year. You know, there's also special assessment categories for like if they're an NRP program, things like that. And so we've got to make sure that we have that properly accounted for. And so we have our surveys, and then we also are out at the properties at a minimum of once every six years. And so whatever we visually see when we're out there at the property is what we also classify as, we use that as that information. But the aerials help out a lot with that.
Thank you, Brad. It doesn't look like we have any more questions.
Thanks, guys.
This is a non-action item, but it is a regular agenda item, so we will take public comment on this. Would anybody like to provide public comment on this presentation? Anyone online, Sarah? Okay. Oh. Make sure you hit that button, so it turns green.
Okay. Very quick, this is just a question, really.
Natalia, would you say your name? We all know who you are.
Natalia Louter.
Thank you.
I'm wondering whether this change in tax value is applied where a piece of land is used in violation of its zoning for an extended period of time? For example, where we have a salvage yard on agricultural use land, and that's documented and complained about and theoretically tried to be enforced, but over the years, they're just getting assessed as ag because that's what they're zoned. So that's, there are several examples in the neighborhood of that, where the use has been contrary to the ag zoning.
Online, Sarah? I wouldn't mind, Brad, if you came up and answered her question. I think that's a good one. All questions are good, but I really want to hear the answer to that one.
Yeah, for that situation, we're going to be making the classification based on our understanding what the actual use is as of January 1st. You know, if it's different than what we've been able to perceive, or whatever the facts that we have on what we've observed, that could be, you know, inconsistent with maybe you'd see as a neighbor. You know, we're out there at a minimum once every six years, and what we can see from the aerials on that. And so it can be very difficult from the road, and a lot of the properties also have gates and fencing there that we try to respect and not go climbing around on their property. And so there might be, we may not be able to see the full picture that the neighbors see. And so, but it all boils down to what this actual use is, and we should be doing that.
But for a salvage yard, use on what is zoned as agricultural land, would that be taxed at a commercial rate?
It's not residential, and it's not, you know, it's not vacant, and it's not ag, and so it would go back to either commercial or other, and so.
Thanks.
And I would say, so we're looking to expand. Pictometry is a great word in this field, that a lot of people don't know what that word is, and it's, maybe I'll have you explain pictometry, Brad?
Yeah, it is now eagle view. I'm sorry for correcting.
Oh, that's right.
But yeah, that's, this is beyond the contract, but it's, they call it oblique imagery. And so it's aerial images from 45-degree angles. And right now, we, our current contract only takes care of the urban areas, about one-third of the county, and we're looking at expanding that to the entire county, to have this oblique imagery. And it's going to allow us to be able to detect these type of things. And I think our GIS coordinator also made a pitch this week for some change detection software, which creates some AI assistance that helps us be able to look at prior aerials and compare them to current aerials, and it'll help us detect whether or not there's, you know, there's cars being stored outside, or if there's a new structure, things like that. And then that gives us more of a heads-up on it, we can go look into it more closely.
Questions or comments?
Just a comment that this was very enlightening, and I super appreciate it. I think that more questions might bubble to the surface, but I really appreciate this better understanding and sort of new filter, or a more clarified filter to think through some of our future decisions with.
Thank you.
I'm actually toying with having Brad do some sort of, like, narrated PowerPoint of this and perhaps put it on our website, just because I think this is, there's so much misunderstanding around this topic in the community.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is consider adopting joint city-county resolution number 2332 pertaining to the appointment of directors to the Lawrence Community Shelter, Inc. Board of Directors. Turn it over to Sarah.
I'm going to turn it over to Jill Joliker. Thanks, Jill.
Commissioners, I put together a background memo outlining what's in front of you, and it is, we're asking you to consider adopting the joint city-county resolution. City of Lawrence adopted it last night, and this just allows for the appointment of the new, the formation of a new board of directors and the county to make the two appointments to that board of directors. Attached a copy of the bylaws that were adopted by the board of the Lawrence Community Shelter this past week, and I'm happy to stand for any questions that you may have.
I just want to confirm my reading of section 5, which is about who the directors are, or section 5, I'm sorry, section 4, which is, which specifically states that no changes can be made to section 4 unless unanimously approved by the board of directors. So that means everyone on the board of directors, if one person disagrees with changing the makeup of that board, then they cannot go forward. They are stuck in that spot. Is that correct?
The way it's currently drafted, yes. I know we've had discussions about changing that, but the way it's drafted, yes.
I would anticipate, I think this is an excellent move forward, and I'm excited to be a part of it, but I would also anticipate that this small board that's being formed might, within itself, decide to expand at some point, kind of as things stabilize and bring in more community voices for that. And I would hope that this would leave that door open for that conversation. I think we've had some fabulous people who would love to serve on that board and bring a great contribution, but we currently have a pretty limited number of spots, which I think is appropriate for kind of the space that we're in and kind of rethinking this. But I don't like that it limits, you know, I don't know, hijacked the right word, but one person could kind of hold up that conversation, where I think the larger community has a lot of interest in making sure that their voice is heard throughout that board.
Yeah, I don't have any further questions. I'm looking forward to some discussion later, but maybe take public comment unless anybody has additional questions. Okay. Open this for public comment. Would anybody like to provide public comment on this item?
Good evening. Thank you. My name's Jamie Price. I'm here to provide some public comment. I do want to note about the makeup of the board. That was actually proposed by county and city staff. That was not necessarily at the direction of the current board at that time, and I was a previous board member when we reviewed those bylaws. So I don't think it was intended, from our perspective, to be that small, but apparently the county staff and the city staff felt like it needed to be restricted to those numbers initially. So I would agree, I don't think it's probably large enough in terms of the importance of what that shelter can do for our community and our citizens that are looking for emergency sheltering. But thank you for what you've done so far to support the shelter and moving forward. We very much appreciate it, and the community very much appreciates your hard work at what you do. Thank you.
Other public comment?
I was at the meeting, well, I zoomed in the meeting, I guess, last night the city had, and I have some problems with the city's appointments. I don't know, were you all aware about the, it came to light that one of the appointments the mayor made, according to Courtney Shifley, she voted against one of the appointments, and it was based on an email in which she claimed the person used dehumanizing language against the homeless. And I'm just wondering if you all have seen that email, and if you know what the language is? Because also, just from what I, from what I think's going to happen, I've talked to a couple people that talked about a court request, because she talked about getting the email in an open meeting. So I think that email will become public knowledge. So if you don't know what's in that email, I think you should at least wait until you find out what's in it, because do you want to be going through with this board? Which I'm okay with, I'm not against that. What I'm saying is if you know that someone who could potentially be anti-homeless, and that the mayor appointed that person, I mean, and you know going into that, that that person's going to be on that board, and I was just wondering, you talk about the language, if you changed that language? Because also, what if you do have one anti-homeless person? Does that mean they can, like, you're talking about unanimous? Do you want someone who's not really in for the, what the, the goal of this board is? Like, I think the goal should be to help the homeless, but I think, because it's a downtown business owner, and I think their intent, like, their, their goal is going to be to get rid of the homeless people downtown, you know? And that's two different goals. There's some of us who want to help the homeless, and some who want the homeless just out of the city. So also, I was wondering if there are any kind of qualifications or priorities, like, because also, another controversy, I guess, kind of last night, was that the mayor hadn't, there were six or seven people that applied, and the mayor didn't interview everyone. The three that got chosen were all white. A black woman was there who had applied, she wasn't interviewed at all. She seemed that she did volunteer work with the homeless, and she seemed, you know, I would actually consider her, and that the mayor didn't even reach out, you know, didn't interview her, and she just hires all, like, people she knows. So I'm just wondering if there's anything you can do about that, especially finding out what was in that email, because I am just, I'm very anti putting someone who's anti-homeless on a board meant to help the homeless. So I just, I'm just begging you to find out what was in that email and do something about it, if it is. I mean, maybe Courtney's just blowing this out proportion, I don't know. So I'm just throwing that out there. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Anyone online, Sarah? Okay. Come back to the commission for further discussion and/or motions. Maybe address some of Mr. Flowers' comments, because we do appointments differently here at Douglas County than the city does. We don't, our practice is not to have the chair or even staff sort of make recommendations. We sometimes will ask staff who they think would be good, but it really can be any commissioner who offers a potential applicant. And sometimes we say we want to take a little more time and talk to them, and sometimes we say, no, that sounds good, and we move on. So we just do things a little differently. Just for me, I, I think those are the city's appointments, and that's what the city felt like was important to them, and I think we may have similar or different criteria for making our appointments, but I think that's what will happen when we get to the appointment stage. But that's not really in the bylaws, as I see it right now. But, but I certainly appreciate Mr. Flowers' concern, I guess, around that bit of one person and the required unanimous, I'm going to say unanimicity, don't quote me on that, I'm not sure that's a word, but, but, I mean, for it, to have to be unanimous on a couple of these articles, I think gives a lot of power to one person. And, you know, I'm not familiar with reading many board bylaws that have that in there. So that was, that sort of surprised me. Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate you raising that issue, Commissioner Kelly, and I think that word does stand out to me, and I, it doesn't seem necessarily common, but I also won't pretend to have read a whole lot of bylaws, relatively speaking, for nonprofit boards, but I do, I'm curious about it, I suppose. I think that's the only part of the bylaws that I hesitate about and, and hope that there will be more future discussion about. I think, you know, the origin of that word is not necessarily important to me, but, you know, the new board, as it is appointed, you know, be after, beyond this week, that that's an issue to address, I think, and determine what the intent or point of that is. Otherwise, you know, my comments are just generally that, I think, I agree with Commissioner Willie, that, you know, seven seems a little small to me, however, I also recognize the sort of unique circumstances we're in, and that there's a, it's a reset right now to some degree, and it's also, there's a sense of urgency that, you know, is surrounding this particular issue. And so I think that seven is fine for now, but my hope is that there will be some not-too-distant future discussion about expansion of that in a thoughtful way, right? That there can be some more explicit definitions in the bylaws in the future about the types of roles or positions that we would... that we would like to see filled in future appointments. And certainly, keeping in mind that lived experience is a piece of that. And I know that that's some discussions that we've had here at the county. But seven is, I think, okay for now. But I hope that that's a priority discussion for how to strategically and consciously expand the scope and define what those, what those roles are and what types of expertise or, you know, professional perspective that we would like to see on the board.
I think it's worth pointing out that the vast majority of decisions that the board would make are not required by this to be unanimous. Just these pieces that we're poking at at the moment, which is expanding the size of the board or changing that makeup of the board. So in part, this is a, this is a new board that will be empowered to take ownership of these bylaws that we're planning to adopt, too. So they can take some ownership of that and say, this is a provision that doesn't work for us, and find a way to change that also. But I don't think it's, in my mind anyway, not worth holding up the show. I think we do have that urgency here. And we have, you know, two sets of partners who have agreed to this. So I think it's good to flag those things. But I don't, I don't see something that's critical enough to, like, reset the process.
Yeah, I would agree with that, Commissioner Willie. But I may want to make sure that I send the message to the five that have been appointed so far and the two more that we may appoint tonight. But that's a concern for me. You know, I agree, I don't want to hold up the process. But I, and we'll probably talk about that a little more in appointments, about the number of people who want to get engaged in this work to solve, to make progress. Let's, I want to be cautious of saying we're going to solve homelessness in Douglas County. But to make progress on it, we're going to need an entire community to get, to work towards these solutions. And if more people are interested in getting engaged, we need to find ways for them to get engaged. Maybe it isn't board service. Maybe there's another way of doing that. But I'm excited that many people want to get involved in this. And, you know, there are limits to how many people we can have on the board. But I also think we need to think about what skills they have. Do they have all the skills they need? You know, maybe this size right now is the right size for the steps that need to be taken now. But I want to encourage these seven people to really think hard about that piece of the bylaws.
Yeah, I think it's just a, not to dictate, but a challenge to the new board to kind of always be aware of, like, what voices are missing? What voices do we need to be, you know, looking to add? Whether that's additional numbers or, you know, as appointments roll off, helping to advise us what's needed and what's missing. This, you know, this initial makeup of the board does not have to be, I mean, the people that we're putting on this board do not have to be the only voices for a period of time. So I think I'm comfortable with it being small in this kind of reset moment. But I think we should be looking for, like, when do we, when do we start bringing in new voices? And which voices are, will still be missing after we appoint ours? Which I assume we're doing in the appointments portion and not in this item.
Happy to make a motion to adopt the joint city-county resolution number 23-32 pertaining to the appointment of directors to the Lawrence Community Shelter Board of Directors.
Second. Move in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. We will now move on to appointments. We do have a food policy council appointment. And we did PSL last week?
Oh, you're right. I just forgot to check it off my to-do list.
How about we get the food policy council one done, and then we'll come back to?
I'd be happy to take that on, especially since we have Natalia Lauer here in the room with us this evening, which doesn't always happen for appointments. So thanks for joining us, Natalia. And we really appreciate your interest that you expressed in joining the food policy council and helping us fill that vacancy. I think, based on my experience with you over the years and the amount of unique perspectives and history of work that you've done, both locally and beyond, that you're going to bring some really interesting perspectives. So appreciate your willingness to serve. And happy to make a formal motion to appoint Natalia Lauer to the food policy council.
I would second that. And it is very hard to get producers to serve on that, which seems like a very critical point of a food policy council. So thank you for being willing to step up.
Before I do this motion, I am very excited that Natalia's doing this. I will tell you, if you'll indulge me for a minute, my very first act of public service was visiting Natalia's farm when I was a planning commissioner. This was my first meeting, my first item. And I went out and had a great conversation with her. So it's exciting, that was a long time ago. But it's very exciting to see her be engaged in one of our Douglas County boards committees. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right. Let's talk about Lawrence Community Shelter appointments. Commissioners, do any of you have someone that you'd like to bring forward?
I would be glad to, you know, I'm aware of two letters of interest. And perhaps other commissioners have received more. I'm only aware of two. And one that I was particularly excited to see was from Christina Gentry, who I've had the pleasure of getting to know over the years in a few different spaces, especially our Affordable Housing Advisory Board, though. And just, you know, she has done a lot of really well-rounded public service. She has also been very, you know, open and vulnerable in many public meetings and different spaces in our community over the years about her lived experience of experiencing homelessness with her family and, you know, moving into stable housing and so on. So I'm really excited that she is up for the job and willing to jump in and send us a letter of interest. So I would like to recommend an appointment for Christina Gentry. And happy to hear about other folks that commissioners may have heard from independently.
I'm very glad to second that one. Was that a formal?
Yeah, sure, we could do one at a, or I guess, Commissioner Kelly, Chair Kelly, do you have a preference?
Yeah, how about we talk about a few? And then we get into motions and seconds, if that's okay?
Sure.
Just because we'll end all our options real quick, if we go that way, maybe.
We're just way in there. I've also had the pleasure and the honor of serving with Christina Gentry on boards, including the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, and find her to be incredibly brave and bold in kind of engaging with people who do not have lived experience and kind of translating that experience for all of them. That's, that's a hard position to be in. And I just appreciate her willingness to serve in a variety of capacities in our community and her willingness to step up for this also.
Yeah, I'm very supportive of Christina. I've known her for quite some time on affordable housing, on Perk. She went through leadership Douglas County. So I've worked with her quite a bit. And I echo what my fellow commissioners have said. I think it's, it's very important, you know, homelessness impacts people of color disproportionately. And so I think it's very important to have a person of color on this board. Not that that person represents all people of color. I think that's important to say. But I think it's something to keep in mind as we think about who is on the board and if we can get some representation there or at least a perspective there. I think that's important. So Christina has brought, and she does that willingly in the spaces that I've been in. And I'm encouraged by that.
It'd be better to have more than one. But we are also, as we look to expand that board, there'll be other voices that we're still looking to add.
Any others we'd like to discuss? We also received a letter from John Crable. I know John works with the Jubilee Cafe, has been very involved in homeless issues. I don't know if other commissioners know John or had a chance to read his letter. And Jill, you might be able to give us a little more background on John.
Sure. In addition to Jubilee Cafe, John has a history of volunteering and working at LCS in the past. He's also been really heavily involved as a volunteer in the county strategic plan to address homelessness. He's a great partner. He walks the walk and talks the talk. So that's my observation of working with John.
Yeah, I am familiar with his work, and I'm familiar with John. And really value the time and energy that has been put into, as a volunteer, as a caring community member, specifically at the LCS, but also kind of across the spectrum with services for unhoused folks.
Yeah, and I'll just add, you know, in my conversations with John over the years, his deep compassion and willingness to find a way to step into the work and show up for the work has been really evident to me. So this, to me, is another, you know, unsurprising example of him being willing to take on a new level of challenge in this space and agree with Jill's sentiment that he really, you know, walks the walk. And so appreciate that he will have some particular perspective to offer, having worked in all of those and volunteered in all those different spaces within our, you know, words are escaping me, sorry, landscape of services. Those are the two that I am aware of, interested to hear. If other commissioners have heard from other folks also with interest.
I started thinking about this and had quite a few kind of folks in mind of good fits. But I think these two names, as they rose to the top, as the ones that I would be most comfortable putting forward, especially in kind of this critical transitioning moment.
I think I did receive a couple of emails, just one today. And I think, you know, in a, in a ideal situation, we would have maybe a little bit more time to go through all of these. But I think it's important that we get this board seated as soon as possible. I think that speaks to some of the discussion we had earlier around how many people are on this board. You know, we've had a couple of nonprofit directors that reached out and said, hey, I'd really like to be involved in this. I think I am adjacent to that system in some way and can offer some perspectives. And I, if we decide to go with Christina and John, I think, you know, I want to encourage those people to stay engaged. We also have some, one community volunteer that I'm aware of that was very interested. He's very talented. And we need to find a place for Paul Carter in this space. But I think it just came over the weekend. I think this was really fast for some of us. So we're weighing some competing values of getting this board set and also having maybe a longer process. And I think that's just something, as a county, that we need to continue to work on, is how we bring nominees forward, how we, you know, let them know that there's opportunities available. I know we've got things on our website and things like that. And, you know, but we, anytime that community members want to get engaged in service, I think we really want to honestly consider those, hear those people, understand what skills and voice they bring to our committees, our councils. This is not the only group that we have that has both Lawrence and Douglas County appointees on it. And so if there are those out there in the community who really want to work in that space, because it's a little tricky. Sometimes we don't have exactly the same values. And I would encourage them to go to our webpage to see what's available there and to reach out to commissioners. Don't, don't wait till there's an article in the journal world. You know, please, please look for engagement sooner.
I would also kind of echo that we put people on boards with the expectation that they also reach back to us and be our kind of eyes and ears in those situations? Because we can't be everywhere. We try. But we don't get to be in the room for those, so we get these appointees. So I think there's a lot of work to do on our part in terms of maintaining those relationships and, you know, finding time, energy to reach out. But also hoping that, you know, folks that are serving kind of on, as appointees from the county, that they would be empowered to reach out to us when they, either something doesn't seem right, or they need some support or just information back so that, you know, we stay abreast of things.
And I think, you know, I was thinking about this earlier today. This particular example of board appointments is a little, is unique in a few ways. But in particular, to your point a moment ago, Commissioner Kelly, this one had a lot of publicity and public awareness and public interest. Whereas we make appointments or part of our, you know, agenda every single week. Some weeks we don't have any, some weeks we have several. And, you know, most of the time, you know, to sort of hearken back to some of the public comment we heard earlier, it is a combination of commissioners and/or staff members who reaching out to folks who they think may be interested in this position or that position, sort of exploring those and then bringing ideas to these meetings and having discussion like this. We are often the ones looking for folks instead of assessing. You know, we're not usually in a position of having multiple interested parties or potential applications. And there's some variance to that, depending on the board, you know. There's variances, of course. But I do think, you know, it's a good opportunity for us to sort of highlight the uniqueness of this in that situation where theoretically, we have multiple folks that we could choose from. And in an ideal situation, perhaps we could spend more time on this process. But I don't, I think that time is of the essence. And so when weighing those values against each other, I think, you know, as you said, Commissioner Kelly, getting this board seated as soon as possible. And the fact that we had such quality candidates, in my opinion, rise to the surface quickly, you know, last week, between last week and this week, had quality candidates, from my perspective, not risen to the surface, then I might be more inclined to ask for some more time and push that time boundary a little bit. And so I recognize that there could be some improvements to our process. And perhaps, you know, there's some things to, you know, look back on this and learn about how to, to get more community members' attention and engage them in looking at different opportunities beyond the only one that's sort of mentioned in the newspaper. I just think that's a part, a piece of the context that's important to acknowledge and to our conversation in general this evening about, at least this commission's, hope that there may be sort of an increase in size or an expansion of the board in time. That now we've got a few folks that we can look back to and perhaps more will become interested over time. And then I will just also hope that that has some trickle-down effect to other boards and commissions and opportunities that we invite residents to serve.
Anyone wants to serve on the fire board? Or the fair board, or the Board of Zoning Appeals? Actually, we have Douglas County Senior Resource Center also. So feel free to step up or bring your friends.
I've heard the city of Lawrence may be dissolving a few boards. So come look at our webpage, get involved in Douglas County. We'd love to get you involved.
Okay, well, we have two people that we've talked about. We have a motion to approve to appoint Christina Gentry. And a second, let's take a vote on that one first. All those in favor?
Aye.
Whoops.
We need to talk about terms. There's.
Oh. Well, we just appointed her. So now we've got to figure out how long to appoint her for.
Both a two-year term and a three-year term.
So I will acknowledge that that's not, I mean, I certainly read that in the bylaws, but not enough time to really discuss with staff whether or not conversations with either of them had been had about that distinction. Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed that too, because it wasn't on the appointments portion. Sorry.
It's okay. I would recommend that we appoint Christina for the three-year term.
I am good with that recommendation. Would you like me to make a new amended motion? Does that help staff? Okay.
Yeah, friendly amendment. Okay. Somebody want to nominate John? I'm happy to nominate John Crable for the two-year term for the LCS board.
Second.
Move in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that takes care of our appointments. Sarah, do we have any other appointments that we've missed?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner and Administrator miscellaneous is our next item, and we usually start with Sarah's weekly memo.
Thanks, Commissioners. My updated memo is in the packet, there are a lot of dates coming up for a lot of different events. Specifically, I want to highlight that the rest of this week, Douglas County and its behavioral health partners are really excited to bring storyteller and humorist Kevin Kling to, to Lawrence for a series of different events with educators and with first responders and human service providers, as well as the public over the next two days. So I highly encourage folks to, to make some time in their schedules to attend and to hear this, to hear these really inspiring stories and talk a lot about, and, and talk with other community members about the work we're doing in this space. In addition to that, Commissioners, I just want to highlight that next week we'll have a work session on open space, an update on our open space plan, and then I am planning for early November, a six-month update on the Treatment Recovery Center. So that's all I have, Commissioners.
Commissioners, I know a number of us are planning on attending a Kevin Kling or two presentation, do we need to make sure we get those noticed?
Yeah, maybe it's just smart to notice all of them.
Yeah, I think we'll notice them all.
Okay.
Just to, just to make sure.
I'm going to one for sure on Friday and may also attend one tomorrow.
Same.
I'll be at the Friday at 11:00. We may have three of us at that.
Okay. Any other items, Commissioners?
I, I did attend the Heritage Conservation Council meeting, I was invited to attend that, really enjoyed it, kind of a good conversation prior to the work session that we had today. All of that would be in the minutes, but it was nice of them to invite me, hadn't been in about five years.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned.